Are you? Paper, rock, scissors? All right. Give it another half a minute. Justin, you got a joke?
There you go.
There we go.
It's a good one.
That's pretty good. All right, just in time, no more jokes, thank you. All right, good evening and welcome to our early, uh, early matinee for the council. So, Councilman Gross will do the indication.
Okay, let's pray. Father, we pause to thank you for this beautiful day, absolutely beautiful day. We ask now that, as we look at tonight's agenda, several budget items that are here, department heads presenting, we thank you for their leadership, their work. We ask for sharp minds and humble hearts as we serve the citizens of Warsaw. It's in Christ's name I pray, amen.
Amen.
My pledge allegiance is to the United States of America and to the people for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Jeff, thank you, appreciate that. Let the minutes show that we're all present and accounted for tonight. With that, we'll go into the approval of the minutes from the August 7th meeting. Those who were presented, if there are any corrections or edits necessary, let us know. If not, I'll take a motion to approve them as presented.
I didn't see any corrections, so I would move to approve the minutes as written.
Thank you, Cindy, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, thanks, Jack. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, thank you. Welcome to all our visitors, department heads, reporters, engineers. Appreciate you coming tonight. Hopefully we'll get you out of here a little early. Reports on communications, the Comcast franchise fee is listed. And then there's a, a letter from the county council who will be reviewing our budget, which is a non-binding review, meaning they just take a look at it. So they've written a few of their expectations, so you can read that at your leisure. I think tonight, the girls got out the financial management reports for wastewater and stormwater at your desk, at your, you know, your place up here. So if you have a chance, go through those. And there is no unfinished business, so let's dive right into new business. Ordinance 2023-0801 is, is a traffic ordinance update. And this update was meticulously prepared by all those involved, Jack and Joel and Lance and Chief and anybody else that, over the years, had noted some inconsistencies in the, in the ordinance. So these are corrections. They've, this has gone through the Traffic Commission and they gave it their approval and make a, made a positive recommendation to the council. With that, Jack, I'll let you take over and just present this ordinance 2023-0801 tonight.
Okay. As the mayor said, this is just some cleanup work that we are doing. In February and March, we passed two different times groups of signs that needed to be updated. These need to be updated mainly because of intersection changes. The signs have been in place for quite a few years. We're just trying to make sure that everything gets updated in ordinance form so that it's all legal and good. There were a, a couple of items here that might have been a little bit confusing to you. I'll just go over a couple of them. I'll take, uh, let's see, number, item number 124 and I believe it's, uh, and 123 and 124. So, uh, these were actually signs in the two-way stop section of our ordinance. However, they had been put in as items somewhat like a, a one-stop, a single stop. For instance, there was a stop sign at the southeast corner of the intersection of Fort Wayne Street in Indiana. Twenty-three, 123 was at the northwest corner of the intersection of Fort Wayne Street in Indiana. In order to maintain consistency throughout this section, we opted to put those two together so that we ended up removing 124 and we changed 123 to have both corners of that intersection. That way it makes more sense being within the, within the two-stop section. We had that, that very same thing happen with 126 and 127 and I believe 128 and 129. So those, those might have been a little bit confusing to you as you looked at them. Some of this was just, 117 was simply a correction of spelling. Instead of Cass Lake, it's supposed to be East Lake. So, you know, just, just some minor changes like that. Does anyone have any questions?
I see here on number 18, all corners of East Main Street and Buffalo Street. That should be West Main Street more than likely.
I do not believe that was the case. That, I'd have to pull that up on a map, but, uh...
One side would be east and the other side would be west.
Yeah.
I don't think it really matters.
Okay.
It's being removed, it's being removed anyway.
It's been removed. And Buffalo.
Good point, Jerry. You're splitting hairs. That's good.
My area.
That's your hood?
Yeah.
All right. So you can see how tedious this work is. And Jack, thank you for taking the lead on this. I really appreciate it. Again, I know Joel worked hard on it as well and Lance, so...
And thanks for getting it out to us earlier last week. So if we wanted to do a drive-by, we could.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Any questions? Okay.
Bring it home, Jack. Well, if there are no further questions, I would move that we accept ordinance 2023-0801.
On first reading.
On first reading.
All right, thanks, Jack. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Jerry, I saw your hand first. All right, so, any other comments or questions before we vote on first reading? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, and it would be your pleasure to suspend the rules since it was unanimous vote, if you feel it necessary, if you'd rather just wait next meeting. It doesn't really matter. I don't believe there's a time sensitivity to this.
There's, there's no time sensitivity, no.
So we can...
Might as well go ahead and do it.
We're here.
All right, so is there a motion to suspend the rules?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Thanks, Diane, is there a second? Michael, did you second it?
Yes.
All right, so motion's been made, seconded, suspend the rules. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, now consider ordinance 2023-0801 on second reading.
I'll defer to Cindy since she's on Traffic Commission.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve on second reading, ordinance number 2023-08-01.
Thanks, Cindy, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Diane, all right. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, thank you.
Good work, Jim.
Item, item two, Resolution 2023-0804. This is a request for transfer, Chief?
Before we start, on my copy, my first page is blank. Is that intentional? Or was there...
Of what?
There were two pages, but one was blank.
Was that like an explanation or something?
There should be a letterhead.
See, I'm, I'm missing that.
Anybody else?
I have that.
I have that.
Okay.
The amounts that are being transferred are in the ordinance. I'll just have Scott, maybe you can read through the letter and articulate what it's for. And then the, the amounts and their, um, two, from and to, are all there. If you, if you have an issue and need some articulating, I think we can, we can do that.
I'm reading Jerry's.
Okay.
I'm good. Copy here. I'm good, thank you.
Okay, so Resolution 2023-808-04, it's a request to transfer monies from the Police General Budget. The first is police salaries into repairs and maintenance in the sum of $19,000. The second is from police salaries into machinery and equipment for $24,000. The third is the transfer from police insurance to repairs and maintenance for $46,000. And as the letter states, to replenish funds as well as to proceed with a project of the, with our roof on our main, main building on our campus, which is the coping. We had the roof repaired, I think, in 2019. Now, this is the final project. The roof was under warranty, this process, this is not. And it's simply coping, like the center blocks, the top edge of that roof to protect. We're still getting some leakage from those areas in the building. And I will note as well, the $24,000 requested to be put into machinery and equipment, $20,000 of that, that was a 2024 budget item. So $20,000 has been, is in the current budget I'll be proposing tonight. That'll be cut later on line one cuts.
Is that for printers?
No, that, that is not. That is for the...
Audiovisual.
Yeah, the audio video system for the police training garage.
Okay. All right. Questions? Hearing none. Counsel willing to take action on Resolution 2023-0804?
I move to approve Resolution 2023-0804.
Thanks, Jeff, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Jack. Any further discussion, questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, thank you. Passing unanimously. Item three would be a transfer from the Street Department, Resolution 2023-0806. Do y'all have the first page of that one?
That one I do.
Okay. All right. So Dustin, I'll let you take it away.
Thanks, sir. He attached, he attached to the transfer resolution from the Street Department's main budget, requesting a transfer from street salaries in the amount of $385,000, which $54,000 going into street repairs and maintenance and $331,000 going into, uh, street repairs and maintenance. Three sixty accounts, the transfer request is for the new printers, which was, you know, recommended by the IT Governance Committee, and $21,000 equipment parts of $33,000 to replenish and then additional micro-surface, micro-surfacing in the amount of $331,000 for an extra.
All right, questions?
There's again, a lot of funding that was in street salaries was, you know, as we all know, there was not a whole lot of winter, so coming up with some, some extra funding there, being very efficient with our time has, has certainly helped to put this money back into redwood.
All right.
On these printers that we're replacing, is, is, are we letting them, like, what I want to say? Just play out or come to the end of their serviceable life and then replacing them? Or, or, okay, is there...
We got a proposal and I think we went through this last meeting, this proposal, is it?
Yeah.
It's a citywide proposal. The real cost savings is the cost per copy.
Yeah.
But to do that, we've got to purchase our equipment and there are some machines that will be not to the end of their life. The department heads have to do it either now or at the first of the year so they can use their 23 budget or 24 budget to do it. But the company that is, is making this presentation, if you will, they're purchasing, in order for them to get good purchasing price, you have to purchase all the equipment. So the equipment, I mean, they carry the cost of equipment the longer we wait. And they, they gave us an extra four months to do this. The IT department has been, the IT group has been working hard on this to come up with a much more cost-efficient way to print in the city. I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah.
And we're eliminating a lot of smaller inkjet printers that are not cost-effective. We're consolidating printers. They went through department, department by department and surveyed the equipment, talked to the department heads and worked through all this. It's been a big job. So it's, it's all, all or none, if you will, in it. But there is some flexibility there if the department heads want to wait till after the first of the year they're allowed to do that, when they can spend the funds from their 24 budget.
And just to clarify, Counsel, well, that, that is, there's a company, from what I understand, is they take care of all the maintenance on the new printers as well as ink and everything with this as well. So that was all part of that purchase.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Well, I am really pleased that we can transfer the money into additional micro-surfacing, so I would vote to approve Resolution or make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-08-06.
All right, thank you, Cindy. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Josh. All right, any, any further questions? All right, hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, Resolution 2023-0806 passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dustin. So before we get into our budget presentations, we've got one more item to consider. This would be the adoption of the Hyatt Palma study that I sent out to you all a few weeks ago. Hopefully you've all had a chance to go through it. We've gotten together with our community stakeholders. We had about a two and a half hour meeting. Went through it and it met the approval of the stakeholders as well. This does not bind us to any projects. It just merely sets the, the direction for future planning for the downtown. And it really is just giving us a focus and direction to continue the trajectory of the improvements that were stimulated by the 2001 Hyatt Palma. I know Jack and Mike have, they sat on the committee with the stakeholders. I know several of you were interviewed. I did get a few comments when we got the draft. And I called Doyle and they, they made some changes in the draft to accommodate those edits that were requested, some by council members. So, really, I have no reason to be anything but totally positive about it. Justin, I didn't, and Jeremy both, I didn't really prepare you, but if you want to make any comments about how you see this, this Hyatt Palma 2.0 before we consider it, I'd certainly be happy to hear that.
I just, I just think it's worth pointing out how valuable the, the previous version was from 2002. We used it over the last 20 years and it was, you can really tell that when we followed those steps, it really did improve things in our downtown. So I think it was a great effort, so.
Thanks, Justin. Jeremy, any?
Anytime you create a roadmap, you give yourself kind of a path forward. I think it's a good thing, that's kind of like the study does, it lays out a path forward and a lot of good things in it. A lot of challenges ahead of us, so roadmap to face those challenges and hopefully accomplish some of those goals.
Yeah, and that's a good point. We're, the, the thing that I really see about 2.0 is it's not just the city going alone. We've had a pretty significant group of stakeholders with the Chamber and KETCO, Foundation, all folks that we've had around the table. This is, this is going to have to be a community effort. Looking at the way this is laid out, I think we talked last time, we're, we're looking at with this downtown group that's going to be formed or developed, hiring potentially a downtown coordinator. So it's going to require lifting from all the, all the stakeholders. Jack or Mike, I know you were at those meetings, any comments?
Let me go first. I was really pleased to, to be a part of that and I would like to be part of it going forward. It's, it's something that is near and dear to my heart, having been born and raised and had a business here in Warsaw. To piggyback off of what Justin just said, I think 2.0 came with something that was not part of 1.0 and that is the coordinator. And I think it's really imperative in a time when other cities and communities are doing exactly the same thing. They're thinking, how do we reinvent ourselves? How do we improve ourselves? How do we make our community a better place to, to live, work and play and attract talent? And unless we have that coordinator, somebody who, that's their job. They get up thinking, you know, what am I going to do today to facilitate this, this, this plan and move things forward? It's going to take longer to, to implement. So to me, the, that's a really important part that didn't exist in the previous one and I, I'm really excited about that.
All right, thanks, Jack, can you?
I would like to reiterate what has been said already by Justin, Jeremy and, and Mike. Goals are good and, uh, if you don't have goals, you'll hit the mark every time. That's kind of a backwards way of looking at it, but if you get goals, something to strive for, something to, to lean into, at least have some vision going forward of how can we make it better rather than just maintaining what we've got. If we, if we just maintain what we've got, we might do okay, but we'll, we'll start losing ground. So the Hyatt Palma study was, was very good. It, I don't think it was earth-shattering in, in some of its ideas. I think we kind of knew. It was, it was kind of nice to have some, some outside eyes looking at it and backing this up. So I, I wholeheartedly support it at this point.
So I think, I would like a vote of confidence from the council to adopt this. If those that don't feel they're ready to do that, want to delay this, I, I'm fine with that. But I, I have had this out to you all for, I think, at least a month. And I would, again, ask for your consideration to do it tonight. And if, if that doesn't work, then, then at the next meeting.
Mayor, what does that mean if we do adopt it? What does that mean if we don't adopt it? What does that mean?
It's just really an endorsement that this is what we want to see happen downtown as we work with our stakeholders. Because the city will be certainly supporting a lot of these projects. And I don't want to go down that path without, with other partners, without your endorsement as the foundation for this document.
Is the council going to continue to be involved in the progress of this thing, you think? We hope?
Well, I, I, I think for the last 20, 22 years they've been involved in, in, in Hyatt Palma. I know the Main Street organization is going to be pretty involved in it. City has two seats on the table at Main Street. The projects, obviously if they're funded even partially through the city, they're going to come back to you all. And I'm sitting here and watching at your new leadership, smiling at how important he thinks this thing is. Jeff, do you have any comments? I mean, I think it's fair to...
Well, it's not just downtown and then 2.0. It's, it's, it's what you said, it's community. And there will be more heavy lifting, I believe, if we can make this a reality. Jeremy's saying it's, it's going to be tough, but back to Mike and the council, I will desperately need your help. Not just insight, but also very likely funding and more planning and that heavy lifting. I'm so excited. When Joe and I first came on in 99, it wasn't but a year or two, you know, Plan Commission, we were a part of that first Hyatt Palma study. And oh my goodness, all the good things. And now to be a part of the second one, I'm really looking forward to not only us, but again, like, like the mayor said, it's, it's going to be a community effort. What we do here is influenced by the entire community. And the community at that meeting, many of you that the meetings, the community's getting in here. They're coming here. And what are you doing? And it's all interconnected. Very exciting, strong supporter of it. And Mayor Tomer's view, I mean, this is the first thing you said you're going to throw at me when I have the privilege of walking in, Jeff, this is number one, high priority, boom. Don't forget, because you've said that's what you've been doing. It's always eyes on that and how is it going, so?
Justin made a great point, you know, that, that, that 2001 study still sits at the top of, of all of the reports that I have on this bookcase. That one is still at the top and we use it all the time. So now I want to put on top of it, if you all see fit.
I, I think it's safe to say too, that this is going to be a good way for, you know, Jeff talks about community, for city and county to work together more. Because, well, we had a couple of representatives at the last meeting, a county commissioner and a county, or a county councilman. And I, I think that's great. I, I want to foster that, that relationship and try to, try to grow it. And I think this is a good vehicle to do that as well.
Josh and I had the privilege of sitting on an economic development initiative for what, the last seven months? And it's interest, and that's not been publicly released yet, so I don't want to say a whole lot about it, but you will see when that comes out that it's very much in line with the Hyatt Palma study. Like another whole group coming in, another whole different set of eyes on everything, coming to very similar conclusions. And that one had a huge amount of community stakeholders that were present and, I don't know if I must say more, Josh?
No, you guys have pretty much covered it, but it is interesting to, excuse me, I have something going on here. Excuse me. It's interesting to, as Diane said, really two completely separate groups of people that have never met each other, never had anything to do with each other and the alignment of what's in the Hyatt Palma study and what's in the community crossroads, or whatever they call it, study are very similar. It's pretty interesting.
Well, in looking at 2.0, you know, there's some pretty sophisticated projects that are being contemplated. You know, you're looking at potentially a parking garage that will certainly have to involve a county. You know, and, and the downtown housing projects, the Owens project, potentially reconsideration of the Buffalo Street project. Those are all high priority. And again, this, this just points us in that direction. I don't think this really binds you guys to anything other than the commitment that we got to keep this moving forward. And that's really what I saw when we sat down with all the stakeholders. You know, the, the first part of this study talked about all the great things that have happened. I didn't even look at that, because that's not, we see it that every day. But we know it's just like standing still. If you don't keep moving ahead, you're going to move back. So there, there's a lot of great, again, more sophisticated projects in here that are going to require, as Jeremy said, some heavy lifting and some commitment on your all's part. But having this as a, as a foundation, foundational document to guide that trajectory, I think, is, is important. So...
I appreciate everybody's comments. I, I would like to step out and say, I move that the common council should adopt... I would like to step out and say, I move that the common council should adopt the Hyatt Palma study.
And I would second that.
All right, thank you. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're getting ready to start budgets. Just a couple of things. Whitney did put the budget numbers down for you all today in your agenda, so that'll be a little easier. The IT budget that you all requested was sent out, and it is in your mailbox, so if you don't have it, check back in the council room before you leave. And we did have a budget book for councilman-elect boss. It was upstairs, so I just, they typically don't provide that till it becomes elected, but I said basically, that's essentially already happened, so he got the budget book, and so we didn't forget him. I just want to make you aware of that. Our assessed value, our numbers have come in, and I think we had a $55 million increase in AV on the civil side, and about $78 million on the fire territory side. Kind of crunching the numbers with the maximum levy, it's going to put us pretty close, maybe even a smidge under from where we were last year. So the AV is going to take care of that, those two budgets, or those two levies. The one thing that we have to consider, though, is that last year, the Fire Territory didn't go to the full levy, so they're going to, I think there were $300,000 under the levy last year. The main reason for that was that they used money from the pension fund to pay their pension. And I, last year, I told Chief Garrett, hold him, I told, you know, you're going to have to pay this next year, so we're going to keep you under the levy by that amount. So this year, they don't have that ability to draw from the pension fund, so they're going to need that $300,000, so they will probably be to the levy. And then we've also, I think I told you last time, we've got about a three cent increase in the debt service because of the parks building down here. And that's an eight-year note, if you will, or eight-year bond, so that will go up. So, I'm looking, we're not going to be at $1.18, but I don't, I think we'll be potentially within the 4% levy increase that we got. So, I'm pleased, none of the numbers are final. We will still have to have cuts, fellows, because we can't spend what we can't raise. So, I mean, we're potentially going to the maximum levy, but if the budgets are above that, and we'll know that soon, Lynn's still waiting on some revenue numbers, tax revenue numbers that we don't have been provided yet, so still a work in progress, but I think it's still good that we've got more growth again this year to offset some of this increase, and let's just leave it at that, it's too early to make a projection, so. All right, so, Kelly, any comments? She knew I was going to call her. This is Kelly, she's filling in for Lynn in case you didn't realize it. Thank you, Kelly. All right, with that, Justin Taylor, you are up, and this is budget number nine, Building and Planning.
Give you a second to flip there.
All right, it looks like most of you got it, so.
Before you, is the 2024 operating budget for the Building and Planning Department. Each year, we manage millions of dollars of construction projects and infrastructure projects around the city. Over the past few years, we've really put a strong focus on cross-training our staff and streamlining the workflows, just to make, to help improve the level of service we provide to the city, so I just wanted to highlight those things. We have a relatively small budget, so hopefully this will go quickly, but if you have any questions, feel free to interject and let me know what questions you have. For professional services, we have the salaries and wages for the Building and Planning, so, sorry, Personnel Services, and I'm showing the 3% increase that was allocated for that line item. We also have provided, we were provided the numbers for PERF and FICA. Unemployment, cell phone allowances, disability have all remained the same from 2023. I'm showing, so overall, the increase for Personnel Services from 2023 is 4% over into 2024.
But Justin, can I interrupt you for just a second? I failed to mention, we got some news last week that our health insurance premium had risen higher than what that preliminary number was. And I took a look at it, and we had a horrible month. They take 24 months of data and average it out, and they use 60% of the entire trust, their claims experience, and they use 40% of the city's experience. So, they blend that, and that's what gives us our rate. Our rate ended up at 6.7%, and we had been told originally it was like 2.6%. So I thought that was a pretty big jump, especially considering that we've gotten preliminary number. So I checked with the trust, and we had an outlier month, it was just a bad claims month. They added one more month before they gave us the final number, and unfortunately, we had a really bad month. So, they couldn't understand that that would have happened, that big of a jump. If you remember right, I asked the department heads to make it a 4% instead of the 2.6, thinking it may go 1% or 2% either way, but in this case, it jumped very significantly. So, 6.7% is still well below medical inflation, so I'm comfortable with it, there's no denying the numbers, but it does, it's going to cause the budgets, each budget, the departments are going to have to add back a little bit for their insurance. So I just, I mean, it's not a significant amount from what we had already budgeted, but I want you to be aware, because I had mentioned last meeting that it was 2.6, and if it's not, it's going to be higher. Sorry, Justin. And this budget you're presenting tonight does not reflect...
I haven't made any changes since we submitted it.
So that all the department heads will be submitting that extra from amount to Lynn, and then Kelly, they'll put the budget together and send it in, and then we'll know, you all will make those adjustments as we go along. But if you look at it, what's budgeted in there is a 4%, and we're asking for a 7% increase, so there's a 3% difference that'll have to be made up, so.
While you're on salaries and wages, can I ask one quick question? I'm assuming the salaries and wages for your department pick up the young ladies that are in the office and everything, that you have all of those under your department?
The admin assistant?
Yes, uh-huh.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
And, Justin, before we leave, the 24% increase in PERF, what...
And we're given those numbers, so that relates to the increases that would have occurred based on the numbers we were given by the clerk.
It's 24, yeah, 24% from 23.
The only reason I ask is I looked in some other departments, and no one's even close to that percentage. I thought, well, maybe you hired somebody, or...
Yeah, there might have been a staffing change. I can double-check, I don't have the full sheet in front of me, but there might have been a change that created that. Sometimes if you hire somebody on, they might have a different insurance, they might insure their entire family, so there might have been a change there.
Dollar-wise, it's a huge amount, but the percentage jumped that badly. All right. That place was up too.
Yeah, that was a budgeted amount last year, and it probably, the 496 was budgeted last year. I've got last, this year, the 2023 budget book, and more than likely, that's not what was ended up actually approved in the budget because of the changes. So, we can check on that, but it would be a combination, sometimes, for example, the health insurance, sometimes they'll compare it to what was budgeted last year, sometimes they'll compare it to what was actually approved, and there's often a difference in those numbers.
Yeah.
So that's my guess there, and there probably is a jump in the, maybe a change in staffing.
Yeah, we'll look into that, Mike.
Yeah, and when you have such a small department, one person's going to have a big impact.
That's a good point.
And PERF is retirement.
Any other questions on Personnel? We will look at that PERF number, just to verify that. Moving on to Supplies, I do have a 33% increase in our office and operating supply budget. That sounds like, again, that sounds like a big percentage, but that equates to about $6,500 to increase that 33%. That's due to material cost increases, the need to replace some old office furniture and computers, and the potential to have a new hire for an engineering assistant, so we need to get a workstation for them as well. So I'm just trying to plan ahead a little bit for some of those things with our supply For Other Services and Charges, there's an overall 1% increase. The small increase was done to accommodate some conferences, and again, continuing education and training, so just in anticipation for that staffing change as well. But our Professional Services budget remained the same from last year, or this year, 2023. Capital Outlays will remain the same as 2023, so overall, the proposed operating budget for Building and Planning will have a 4%, or has a proposed 4% increase over 2023.
All right, thanks, Justin.
Thanks.
Community and Economic Development, Jeremy? First budget's 2237. I guess that's how they're listed, is that the one you want to do first, Jeremy?
Yeah, we can just go through based on the numbers, as long as it kind of flows through your books. The 2237 is the Warsaw Technology Park Fund. The way I have these sheets spread out are, because all of them, except for Redevelopment General, are a non-tax fund, so they're basically, they're taxes, but they're collected as an increment, and they go into that fund, and then we allocate those funds to be paid on projects or spent on projects. The Redevelopment General is a tax rate-supported fund, so that's the only one out of all these funds that's tax rate-supported. So the way you'll see these is you'll have our current budget for 2023, and then I'll show the proposed budget for 2024. And I have the current balance, so you can see where we started at the beginning of 2023, the expected revenue, and then the layout of this 2023 budget, so you can see for the Technology Park, we had 1.217. Now we added some additional funds to purchase the Marsh Building, but you'll notice that it gives us an end balance of 2023 of around 1.4 million, with the revenue of $450,000, which is where you get next year's budget of 1.8 million. Because they're increment-based funds, we can only spend what we have in that fund. So for next year, I budget roughly $150,000 for Professional Services, $150,000 for property acquisition, which is a placeholder, and then 1.5 million for capital projects. And that could be anywhere from gas lines, water lines, sewer extensions, whatever needs to be done to support growth within the Technology Park. Could be for incubator, technology hub, incubator, so a lot of different options. We're looking at a lot of different projects, depending on what comes to the forefront in 2024, that's what that money would be allocated towards.
Jeremy, the tech park has a $5 million cap on what we can...
Yes.
Whereabouts are we?
We are, and I have, I have all the revenue here, if you had it, I think we're around 2.6-ish, 2.7.
So we're roughly halfway through what we can take off on increment? And who knows, they may change that over the next few years, I know there's been some discussion to do.
Yeah, and then, so it is, so there are some additional revenue we can receive, but it has to be new revenue, and I think it's capped at like $150,000 per year, or $100,000 at this point for a year, so it's not a substantial amount of money after you hit the $5 million cap, but after you hit that $5 million cap, you have to regenerate that money. So, whatever you've done to that point, you don't get credit for, so then you'd be starting over, so you'd have to create new increment to be captured after you hit that $5 million cap, to collect that additional, I think it's $150,000 per year, and then you're capped at that $150,000 that you would collect after that. Any questions on that one?
I was just curious, I see that OrthoWorks is no longer in next year's budget, did that move someplace else?
No, that was a five-year commitment that we had made, so it is...
It's for Cell Links, if I remember correctly.
Cell Links, yeah, so that had been, our commitment was reached, yeah.
Okay.
Good point, Diane. All right, let's go to 2503.
So this is the Redevelopment General, it is tax rate-supported, so you'll see, beginning in 2023, we had roughly about half a million dollars in that fund. We expect revenue from the taxes collected of around $200,000. 2023's budget is around $315,000. This fund is primarily for the operations of the Redevelopment Commission itself, and it also allows a small amount of money that we can use for projects all across the city, so it is not capped by a district. So any funds within this district, we can do projects wherever we want, it could, some of them could be a project within a district, it could be a project without a district, but allows us some flexibility in redevelopment funds for those projects, whether it be on Market Street, that isn't in a TIP district, or downtown, which might, some of it is in a TIP district, but allows us that flexibility that we're not constrained by lines on the map. For 2024, I've got roughly wages and benefits on my wages, and my assistant's wages are paid out of here, and $72,000 for those wages and benefits, office supplies of $3,000, professional services of $30,000, minimal travel, 500, printing, 2,500, bonds of 500. Every year, the Redevelopment Commission city is required to have a $100 bond for each Redevelopment Commission member, that's what that $500 is for. Other services, $6,500 for operating supplies, or for equipment, and then roughly, we budgeted around $150,000 that could be used for projects across the city, which gives us a total budget around $265,000. I do have the salaries attached to this one, so you can kind of see mine and my assistant's salaries. We're spread out over a number of different budgets, so it's not, some of it comes out of this budget, some of it comes out of Northern TIP budget, some of my, comes out of sewage, some comes out of edit, so we're kind of spread over a variety of, but you can see how it relates to the Redevelopment General's budget.
So, when there's a lower expected revenue for this coming year, that's because you're expecting to get less from the taxing?
It depends on how the increment, so we're just a part of the tax rate, so depending on what our rate is as it goes up and down, collects less or collects more.
Okay.
Questions? All right, let's go to 4445, which is the redevelopment allocation, which is the downtown TIP.
So, I think this is where there is a 444, 4444, that was not on the, not on your agenda.
You want to do that one first?
Yeah, I mean, it's... Yeah, I mean, it's really simple, because it is the marketplace TIF that we just created. For the marketplace TIF bond, it's basically just a allocation area within the Wyandotte Interurban. So any revenue coming off of that marketplace, as they made those improvements, increased revenue that goes into here, gets captured and pays for those bonds. Our first bond payment will come due in twenty-twenty-four. So there was no budget for twenty-twenty-three. This, twenty-twenty-four will be the first year. I expect, hopefully, we cover those bonds, so we'll be somewhere around that eighty to seventy-five thousand five hundred is the bond issue. So our payment next year will be seventy-five-five. We hope to collect that in increment. If you'll remember correctly, this was a ten-year agreement, or the twenty-year bond was a ten-year agreement. The developer pays for any shortfall in the first five years. We will pay for any shortfall in the next five years, and then after that, the bank would cover any shortfall.
Questions? All right, let's move to redevelopment allocation, forty-four, forty-five.
So this was the original downtown, the first TIF district that was created in Warsaw. It covered the Zimmer headquarters project. Current balance in that fund is around five-hundred-and-fifty thousand. We expect revenue to be around three-hundred-and-twenty thousand for twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four. Gave us a total of around eight-point-seven, eight-hundred-and-seventy thousand for twenty-twenty-three. Twenty-twenty-three's budget was the three-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand. We have our bond for our Buffalo Street project that comes out of this fund. Flipping to next year, we have a total balance projected for the beginning of twenty-twenty-four of just under a half a million. Expected revenue of three-hundred-and-twenty thousand gives us around eight-hundred thousand to work with. We've got fifty thousand in professional services, a five-thousand-dollar placeholder for property acquisition. Four-hundred thousand dollars is in capital outlays for projects within that TIF district, and then the bond payment of one-hundred-and-sixty-five-five, which gives us a total budget for twenty-twenty-four of six-hundred-and-twenty thousand five hundred dollars. That four-hundred thousand dollars could be used on a number of projects. Could be the Buffalo Street project, it could be the Owens project, could be the Marsh project, depending on what comes before. It is not earmarked for one or the other, but we have a couple of, three projects, big projects we're working on downtown, so that money will go towards one of those three projects, or it could be split between the three of them.
Jeremy, when's the Buffalo Street bond payment up? You know, I'm paying.
There's two payments, so one in June, and then one end of the year.
When's the bond retired, I guess was my question?
Twenty forty.
Twenty forty, okay. All right, any other questions?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to forty-four, forty-six, which is the Northern TIF, excuse me, Residential TIF.
Yeah, this is Northern Residential TIF. So this is, these two TIF districts are relatively new, the Northern and Southern. They're starting to pick up some momentum as we work on housing projects, and hopefully, the things that we're doing now will further increase and help us pay for these projects. Current balance at the beginning of twenty-twenty-three was two-hundred-and-thirty thousand, expected revenue around two-hundred-and-sixty. Gave us just under half a million for last year. We had twenty thousand in professional services and one-hundred-and-fifty thousand in capital outlays for a total budget of one-hundred-and-seventy thousand in twenty-twenty-three. Pushes us to around three-hundred-and-twenty thousand in revenue for twenty-twenty-four, or balance for twenty-twenty-four with revenue of around two-hundred-and-eighty thousand, which gave us around six-hundred thousand to work with in twenty-twenty-four. I've got thirty-five thousand in professional services and three-hundred thousand in capital outlays. There's a couple of projects that we're working on in Northern Residential TIF would be Alta Vista, which is a subdivision just off of Old Thirty. And then we have a development agreement with BIGGS on continuing Bel Augusta north from their current phases. That has some storm improvements that we'd be doing in those. So that's what these funds would be allocated for as those projects develop.
Questions? All right, so then we'll go to forty-four, forty-seven, which would be the Southern Residential TIF.
A little bit slower growth in this one, but you have roughly balanced, starting this year, of just under a hundred thousand. Expected revenue of around two-hundred-and-twenty thousand. Gave us a total funds in twenty-twenty-three of three-hundred-and-eighteen. This year's budget had about a hundred thousand that will go, has gone through for professional services and also for, towards the lift station project that we've done, we're working on now. Starting in twenty-twenty-four, you'd have around two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand with expected revenue of around two-hundred-and-thirty. Gives us a total funds for next year of around four-hundred-and-forty thousand. Next year's budget has fifty thousand in professional services and two-hundred thousand in capital outlays. For a total of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, primarily, these funds will be pushed towards that lift station project as we finish that up. Our goal is to use the growth from that to, right now, wastewater is paying for that lift station to be built. The intent of these funds would be to reimburse those construction costs while we continue to work towards new growth projects.
All right. Go on to forty-four, forty-eight, which is the Northern Redevelopment TIF.
I didn't start off the meeting, but you all have our annual financial report for the Redevelopment Commission. A lot of what you're seeing here follows that, and you'll see the list of projects. So a lot of what's on this piece of paper and comes from the Redevelopment Commission is in that financial report. So it kind of helps you, guides you through these budgets as, as we go through them. So starting twenty-twenty-three is around six-point-four million. That was in the fund. Expected revenue around three-point-one million, gave us a total of about nine-and-a-half million for twenty-twenty-three. This is where all of our bond payments come out of for different economic development projects. The three Wyandotte PVDs, the Thompson and Thrift, the Airport Industrial Park, bond payments all come out of this fund. So twenty-twenty-three's budget was around three-point-eight million, which left us around five-point-seven million available for twenty-twenty-four, with revenue of around three-point-one, which gives us around eight-point-eight million total for twenty-twenty-four. Some of my salary and the engineer's salary and my administrative assistant's salary comes out of this fund. So there are some, just a percentage of our wages come out of the Northern TIF. So around one-hundred-and-two thousand five hundred dollars is proposed for salaries. The sewage bond pledge is six-hundred thousand dollars. This district was primarily created for the Sophomore Dianic Project, and part of that Sophomore Dianic Project was the expansion of the sewer plant and the extension of the sewer across US thirty. So since the inception of this district, there's been that six-hundred thousand dollars towards that sewage plant projected, and that continues until its expiration in twenty-thirty. And that was part of the recent bond issue that you did to expand, or SRF loan that you did to expand the sewage plant. That six-hundred thousand will continue until twenty-thirty. Wyandotte PVD bond, two-hundred-and-eighty thousand five fifteen. Wyandotte PVD, the second bond, one-hundred-and-ten thousand five thirty-eight. And then the third Wyandotte PVD bond in amount of fifty-two thousand nine twenty-five. Thompson Thrift bond, which is the Coles Development, one-hundred-and-eighteen thousand eight sixty-six. And then the Airport Industrial Park bond, three-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand. That was for the eighteen thousand feet of sewer pipe that we put through the Airport Industrial Park in twenty-nineteen. I've got nine-hundred thousand dollars in engineering, professional services, property acquisition placeholder of five thousand, and infrastructure projects of around three-point-five million. We're expected to go to bid next year. I don't know that it will start on the Anchorage Road project. So the professional services money in here and the construction money are primarily allocated towards that project. So you will have a CE agreement, a construction and engineering agreement that Redevelopment Commission will enter into to oversee the construction of that project. I don't know that it will start construction next year, because it won't be bid until after July, but it will be, it could start some construction next year or moving into twenty-twenty-five. Either way, our funds for professional services and the construction will be paid out next year. Total budget of just over six million for the Northern TIF.
Did you say eighteen thousand feet?
Yes.
Sewerage extension?
Yes. It was just over five million dollars of sewer that we put in the ground for that project. We paid some in cash and we bonded some.
All right. Any further questions on the Northern TIF? All right, let's move on to redevelopment, four-four-four-nine.
So this is the Wyandotte Interurban TIF, also known or commonly referred to as the GAKI TIF. It primarily was the GAKI property and some, a few surrounding parcels when it was created. We expanded that to take in the marketplace when we were trying to revitalize that in two thousand and eighteen. So the current balance at the beginning of twenty-twenty-three was just, just under sixty-five thousand, with expected revenue of around twenty-four thousand. Gave us a total funds in twenty-twenty-three of around eighty-eight thousand. We had a fifty-thousand-dollar budget, twenty thousand in professional services, thirty thousand in capital outlays, which left us a balance moving into twenty-twenty-four of around thirty-eight thousand, with twenty-six thousand in expected revenue. Gave us around sixty-four thousand for funds to use in twenty-twenty-four. I've allocated twenty thousand for professional services, and then additional forty thousand for capital outlays projects. So that funds could be spent on anything in that district. We have the GAKI project that we're working on, so that will be available to assist with that project. We've got the marketplace that we're still trying to get some more tenants in, so it could be used for that project. We're working on, with Warsaw Chemical, and they're, on, working on their project and redevelopment of their site. So a couple of different projects that could be used on. We've got a Durbin Street project that wastewater and their storm is working on, so it could be pushed towards that as well. Not a lot of funds in this district at this point. Hopefully, as the GAKI project kicks up, as the new housing project goes up on Durbin Street, we'll start to see some additional funds generated within the district.
Questions?
To be fair to say, keep an eye on this one.
Yeah. It's taking some time, but I'm pretty excited to get the GAKI project going. All right, any final questions? Jeremy, I know you're busy. I know you've done a lot of great work, and a big part of your job is just keeping these budgets where they're supposed to be. So appreciate it. Final comments?
Just thank you for making it easy to understand by the way you laid it out.
Yeah, don't hesitate. Like I said, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me. But when I give you that financial report every year, that pretty much lays bare what we're working on and where we're headed. So if you ever have any questions with that, feel free to give me a call.
You know, there are a lot of projects and a lot of numbers, and he probably gets tired of my phone calls, but I call him all the time just because I have questions. Exciting.
All right, thanks, Jeremy. All right, Chief Whittaker, start on budget number six.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Which is the general fund.
Okay, so the twenty-twenty-four police proposed budget, starting off on police salaried employees. It's going to be the, probably the most significant increase with the proposed budget of hiring yet the forty-third officer for twenty-twenty-four. Before I get started, just want to note, this is certainly in the early stages. Just wanted to build, to put this in the budget in the event that it came to fruition. So with this, there's obviously additional cost for the officer through additional benefits and equipment purchases as well as a new hire. It is offset, and I made a note of that just below it, and then on my narrative on page two of the explanatory sheets, that's if in the event that we entered into another contractual agreement with Warsaw Community Schools, there'd be an additional one-hundred-and-eleven thousand eight hundred approximately. That would be a revenue source for twenty-twenty-four.
So is it eighty percent of their?
The way that we had proposed it, it was seventy-five percent. Obviously, it's all less negotiable.
Right.
It'd be something that, but with the, being an eight-year terms, we've done in the past to solidify that, obviously, that the contract's going to last for an extended period of times as we're hiring a new employee. But that first four years, we, those installments are greater because we're actually requiring that they pay for the equipment for that officer, given that we expect that the longevity of most equipment for police would be in eight years at the maximum. So, so yeah, it'd be an eight-year agreement with the first four being higher. So with that, the increase of salaries is two-hundred-and-sixty-nine, three forty. The insurance, as the mayor talked about, with the additional three percent, it's approximately twenty-seven thousand. That would be additional. That's something that may or may not be required to be cut based, or additional appropriation based upon future decisions. Total personal services, like we'll hit on pension, it's always an item of note. Years past, several years, we've been able to take a portion, if not all, but a portion of the pension fund and pay towards the city's contributions to the Police and Fire Pension Fund on behalf of the police officers, the city's portion. This year, we're using the last of those qualified funds. And so that amount has still reduced, but significantly higher as far as what the city's contributions will be. So there's a thirty, almost a thirty-six percent increase for pension contributions, and that's where that derives from. Total personal services is an increase of seven-point-four-six percent at five million three, I'm sorry, five million five hundred thirty-eight thousand nine eighty. Any questions on personal services?
Chief, are you at full force now? Are you full capacity?
We are not. We're budgeted for forty-two. We're currently at forty, but in a current process where we have potential, so very close.
Very close. That's good.
Other services and charges? Professional services, increase of forty-four percent. That's going to be greatly due to, we added the contractual services with Chaplain Sumner last year, and that in an amount of twelve thousand. Then the, the total for other services and charges is an increase of nineteen-point-four-eight percent to four-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand two hundred. Any questions on other services and charges? I apologize, I believe I skipped supplies.
Is that page missing? I think that page is missing.
It is missing.
That's why you skipped it.
That's fine. Really not trying to slide one in there, but I'll go to the actual budget itself to supply category. Operating supplies at ninety-four thousand, fuel at one-hundred-and-eighty thousand, ammunition twenty-one thousand, quartermaster uniform supply seventy-nine thousand. Of those, the fuel, we were able to, to lock in a fuel agreement again this year for two-ninety-seven for twenty-twenty-four. I had budgeted, or we had budgeted, three dollars per gallon, so very, very pleased with the fact that it's on, online with our, our budget for twenty-twenty-four.
Paying what, two-ninety-nine this year, so it's pretty much a couple cents lower than what we're paying this year, which is pretty incredible. Board works locked that in, what, two meetings ago, yeah, early August.
So I will get you the explanatory sheet for the supplies to, to add to, to your current stack of documents. The total for supplies is four-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand. I do not have in front of me, but the post for twenty-twenty-four.
I can pull that up, chief. The increase. Maybe I don't have it, sorry.
We'll just say very minimal.
Okay.
Other services and charges I just covered, go to capital outlays. Typically get asked for the commission list, and I was prepared this year to. So what you're receiving is our up, pretty much up-to-date commission list, the mileage won't be, will not be up-to-date, because that's updated as the vehicles are serviced. Part of the additional expense of, if we were to go with the 43rd officers, obviously to, to have enough police vehicles, because you'll see in the, in this budget for 2024, we're requesting a purchase of seven new cars. Five of those would be for squad cars, and two of those would be designated for detectives. I've always kept a note, or to make a note of the past new car purchases, as you can say, we've stayed very consistent with the four to five, last year being four new vehicles.
And chief, if I'm correct in talking with your mechanic, one of his concerns are that your spare cars have such high mileage and are just nickel-and-diming you on repairs. Is that correct, that every time?
Yes, if, if they were not police cars, they would not be feasible or make sense financially to keep them. However, you know, just the cost of replacing the equipment in those vehicles, we try to keep those cars in service as long as possible, as long as they're safe, obviously, but when they have functioning equipment inside of them, which they are, but our Caprice models are, are aging rapidly, they're starting to drop off. We're sitting in a, in a situation where, yeah, I mean, all of our officers are driving nice cars, but the, the spare fleet or the spare cars are, are struggling. Our hopes is obviously as we get these new cars, who pass those on, and drop those, those older, but newer cars into our spares, and we can get rid of those Caprices altogether. Has he been reaching out to the council members? So outlays, the expense, or the increase is a total of 194,800 to 554,700. Another item I had here noted that this will be $20,000 less because of the, earlier in the meeting when we transferred the funds for the audio equipment. The total budget is proposed at 6,975,880, which is a 9.38% increase from 2023. I further, just made a few notes in the explanatory sheet to kind of get an idea of where that increase is coming from, and just if you take out those five items that I make mention to, the increase would only be 2.7%, not the 9.38.
And are you going to add another systems administrator, or you hope to?
So we, we added the senior administrator position, systems administrator position. That was this year, and we've since hired the, the systems administrator.
And those are the, that's the one that we're going to hope is cross-trained, so that we don't get left without somebody to do the job.
Yeah, and I probably didn't make mentions of that, but with the, the salaries and lease or the, the benefits, this does include the, the additional systems administrator position.
I remember you talking about that when we went over the other situation, but I just wanted to be sure that's what it was.
Yes, yeah. We were fortunate to hire the additional systems administrator a few months ago, working out very well. Any other questions for the budget 006?
All right, let's move on to 2228, which is law continuing ed.
So the proposed law continuing ed, which is revenue-driven, is very little change, staying with the purchase of patrol and cart video systems, and we're hoping to be able to get as many as five, but the total amount is 26,500. It's a decrease from last year, 29,000.
Chief, this is not a tax-supported fund.
Correct, it is not. These, these funds derive from the law enforcement user fees, the court docket fees, accident report fees, and then in the past, it was the handgun license fees. And then for revenues last year, as the, I believe as the year before, since the removal of the handgun license fee requirement by the state, we lost that income, which was just a few dollars shy of $10,000 per year. We received basically a grant from ICJI. We received it last year. I wasn't sure that we're receiving it this year, but we will be receiving it in the, in the second half of the year, the next 30 to 60 days, and again in 2024.
So that was a way to offset the loss of the gun permit registration fees?
Correct.
Yeah. But like you said, maybe three years?
Right. They haven't guaranteed anything past 2024.
Questions? All right, then your last budget, 8802, I believe that's pension budget?
Yes, the police pension budget, it is basically a decrease of 280,640. I'm sorry, a decrease of 98,605 for the total budget estimate is 280,640.
And that detail is all listed in your, in your book.
Yeah, thanks for your page that you included with the budget notes, everything that changed out the state that changed all those amounts in there.
Yeah, we transferred over to the other budget.
Yeah, 3%, for some, and 4% for others. That was helpful.
All right, any final questions? So again, just to note, you know, these budgets are all presented as, as the full budget for the year, and waiting to see what happens with, with our levy. We may have to get back, and the department has been great about prioritizing their needs, and we'll just, as you know, this all evolves to sometime in October when we make the final approval, so we've certainly got, probably got some work to do.
And I will forward an email that has the entire narrative of the supply category for you.
Chief, before you step down, on the 31st, your task force training will occur at the police station. I want to thank you, your leadership, as well as several members from your team for hosting and helping us through that again for another year, so thank you very much.
All right, Dustin, you're up. General fund 1101, fund 008, street carpet general fund.
All right, so general fund, getting salaries and wages at 3%. We do have one additional employee. As you remember, probably last year, we had done the central services, the whole organization taking on quite a bit of a, a work to eliminate some tasks for some other departments and keep from tripping over each other, so we cut one last year. We have the, another additional employee back in this year. Increases on employee benefits, I was kind of noted as, as this went through, no change on other personnel service, or other personal services. So total 4.49% increase for $3,677,877. Again, a lot of that is the one additional employee to, to add there.
What is your head count?
Right now, we, we've been at 39 all summer with part-time employees, but full-time employees, we have 34 right at the moment. We're one short, we just haven't really advertised with having the part-timers there. We've been getting by just, just as well, so the goal, we get to 36 eventually, so. Supplies, office supplies hasn't changed there. We did up, up the 220s in operating supplies by $25,000, 450,000, that's for all our cleaning supplies, oil, fuel, antifreeze. You never know what fuel prices you're going to get. We did lock in with a cheaper rate here, just as mayor had mentioned, with gas as well as diesel fuel, so we are locked in there. As far as repair and maintenance supplies, 350,000 total, that's a $30,000 increase as, as far as our 230s, that's us doing work, construction and repair in-house, things are constantly going up, so just gives us a little bit of cushion there. Other supplies, the meals for emergency workers hasn't changed, total 806,500 there for a 7% increase. Under other services and charges, again, 150,000 for engineering fees. There was a $5,000 increase for communication, transportation, a lot of these trainings and stuff to just, you know, to get, trying to get more and more employees a little more well-versed in mosquito training and different seminars to go to. Utilities was not a, wasn't an increase. Our repairs and maintenance 360s did go up significantly there, $465,000. Majority of that, actually all of that pretty well, other than the weed control and brush grinding had went up a little bit, was adding $200,000 for potential replacement of traffic signal heads. We did enter into an engineering contract just this, earlier this month with USI to have the intersection here at Lake Street and Main Street updated, just, they'll be just like what we have out here on Center Street, so it's kind of the last one out there until we figure out what all is going to happen with Market Street, what directions that's going to clean up downtown and have them all matching, and as well as on the same kind of maintenance schedule, not getting those stretched out too far. So $200,000 increase there for that. Rentals, no change. Other services and charges, you know, a little bit of the standard increase on the landfill. Next year, this is a 35% increase on, you know, the $200,000. Next year is the year we will have to bid recycling again, so that's kind of tentative, but you know, you don't know what you're going to get for sure, so that's, that's taking a stab at that, but next year will be our year to bid, to rebid recycling, so. The total, 1,240,000 there for a 29% increase overall in other services and charges. Capital outlays with machinery and equipment, this year we're at 880,000, it's a 14% increase. It's just a, a leaf truck with a, a hook style, hook truck chassis. To explain that, right now, we have a one-armed automated leaf truck. It's worth its weight in gold, cuts down to one employee running it at a time, super, super efficient, holds about three times. The truck's used for, we got a killer deal, we bought it used, the truck's used for probably six, maybe seven weeks out of the year, and it's, it's in the art. So finding another used one like that, it's like finding a needle in a haystack, it's not going to happen, but this would allow that, that assembly to be pulled up on a hook style chassis, run that for those times, take it off, put another attachment on it, such as a grapple truck or something else that we use quite often. These trucks are so darn expensive anymore to buy, everything is, but to, to basically turn this into something we can add attachments to, it's, it's kind of a way of the future and basically an opportunity to buy, you know, three trucks with one chassis type deal. So we're looking hard into that. The availability right now is, is a little thin still on chassis, but that's something that we're really strongly looking into to, to kind of make those dollars stretch a little bit farther and increase their, or increase, you know, the capacity as well as efficiency. Small payloader, if you remember, we bought one a couple of years ago. This is to replace the old one that we kept. These are two machines that we use almost every single day. So the other one is pushing about 19 years old, so this would just be replacing that. Mobile lifts back in the mechanic shop, we, we ended up teaming up with wastewater and the fire department a couple of years ago, bought six of these, this would be another additional two, so we would have two complete sets, which is something our mechanics use, you know, constantly. A digital sign printer gives us a lot more options on what we can do, is for what signs we can make, how fancy we can get, things of that nature. It's a huge savings to the city, so I think what we're, that's just something to give us a little bit more options. As well as three pickup trucks, we traded in a few of them, two of them this year, the, were crew cab pickup trucks. We would like to get a couple, three more, kind of hand the supervisor trucks down into the fleet to take the trainings and to use every day. Our crews are going out, the old standard cab pickups doesn't haul too many people out to the job sites anymore, I mean, with the work we're doing, so. $110,000 increase right there for a total budget of 6,604,377, right at about a 10% increase. Again, the 3% wages and the 200,000 in traffic signal, and the additional employee makes up for majority of that. Questions on the general fund?
All right, let's go to 2201.
2201's MVH, the regular MVH, this is a total of 450,000. It's about a 50% increase from last year, again, $170,000 in salt, road salt, anti-icing, you know, wintertime products, also adding $60,000 for, you know, 230 repair and maintenance, that's again, our, our crews doing work with this fund, or with those funds. $20,000 in safety equipment, street signs, traffic signal maintenance, no change there, and $200,000 in repairs and maintenance of 360. This is contracted work, paint striping, so a little increase there. I just see in some of these state-funded budgets, we have increased these, they've had, you know, a significant amount of savings in the past, or taken in a little bit more than what we were, we were anticipating, so this is pulling that money out, using as much of it as we possibly can, make those taxpayers, or tax dollars, put to work. Questions on MVH?
Next would be local roads and street?
Local roads and street, this was, yeah, 2202. No change here, to speak up from 2024 to 2023, I got $250,000 in repairs and maintenance, 230s. Again, this is, you know, paving streets, alleys, you know, just hot, or hot and cold patch, okay, the street materials, this is again, us doing work in-house with $100,000 in repairs and maintenance in a 360 account, which is contracted work there, so.
Can I go backwards just one? Where does the money from the motor vehicle highway funds come from?
What, where does it come from? Oh, it, it's a big pot, it breaks down through.
It's not property, Max.
That's what I thought, so this isn't.
No, it's a state-funded account through different.
That's what I was thinking, so this is not going to affect?
This is.
No.
Budget.
This is our share.
Right, of what we know.
Of transportation funding. By the way, they've got a study committee this summer to relook at transportation funding.
Yes.
So, community crossings hopefully will stay intact, but these LRS and MVH that come from.
Wheel tax.
Wheel tax.
All those funds are supporting.
Because of your gas tax.
Transportation budget.
Gas and heat tax.
Gasoline tax, cigarette tax, registrations, your license plates, all of those, where does this funding come from?
I just wanted to make sure I was right on that, that it's not, it's not something.
They're looking at the gas tax because there's a lot of electronic vehicles that are not paying a tax, and they're going to institute, I'm sure, some type of. are not paying a tax, and they're going to institute, I'm sure, some type of motor vehicle tax for electric vehicles.
So it's basically though, a UCHV tax?
Yeah, pretty much.
Twenty-two oh-three is MVH restricted. Again, you have to pull right now, I don't think it's, it's passed where we can divvy that up any different, but MVH and MVH restricted has to be the same amount still at this point. Kelly's nodding her head, that's always great when the clerk's office agrees with me, but a fifty percent increase here as well, the four hundred and fifty thousand, all of this is put into repairs and maintenance three-sixty, this would be contracted work, this is again, hopefully do, will, will move towards our next year's CCMG project, our community crossings project, and we'll invest all that towards, towards that along with part of wheel tax. We're hoping things work out the way as planned, we're hoping to, to complete Hodges Phase Three here in twenty-twenty-four, so.
And remember, we put some ARPA money into these neighborhood repairs as well, so there's a lot of sources that, you know, kid, kid Dustin, he's got all kinds of.
Get off.
Lots of money coming in, but he doesn't think that's funny.
I'm like an old dog, just keep feeding me. I have it as twenty-two fifty, I believe on their sheet it said twenty-two oh-five, but I believe the appropriation is twenty-two fifty, isn't it?
Yep.
So, wheel tax, wheel tax about, we have seven hundred thousand, it's about a sixteen point six-seven percent increase, a hundred and fifty thousand in our two-thirties repair and maintenance, that's again us, that's our, our inside house work here for the street department, and then five hundred and fifty thousand in contracted repairs and maintenance, again, part of this will go into micro-surfacing, part of it will go into paint striping, part of it will go into community crossings grant to match, we're strongly hoping and trying to figure out a way that we can stretch dollars enough to apply for both community crossings opportunities next year, so.
So managing all these funds is, is tricky because you don't know how much you're going to get, but, you know, Dustin and I always talk is, we need to spend this money on road repairs, that's what taxes are for, it's the only thing you can spend it on, we're not sitting there with any money in reserve, but occasionally if there's a, a community crossings project that's going to be a little bit more, we may have to save a little over a year to, to be able to come up with our match for the community crossings, but for the most part, this money needs to be spent, as far as I'm concerned, and Dustin's done a good job of managing these funds with, with all of his, his crack sealing and, and micro-sealing and resurfacing, that, that asset plan that I know he'll talk about maybe at a different meeting, really has shown how, even when Superintendent Beeler was started, got that project, got that thing going, it gives us guidance on where to spend these dollars, and that was the whole idea when the city, or excuse me, when the state changed transportation funding. So it'll be interesting to see what the study committee says this summer, I think, I think they're going to have a report next year, early in the session, about how they may want to change road funding, and it could be different than what we've been looking at, but I can assure you that, that we've been trying to use those dollars as, as efficiently as we can to get these road repairs done, and I think it shows in our community. Dustin's done a great job, so thank you.
Well, thank you, sir, and just, as I said, those state-funded accounts, we should be, should be pushing right at about seven, one point nine million dollars of total funding going back into our infrastructure next year, between our work in-house as well as contracted work, so it'll be one of our biggest years that, that we've had and very well looking forward to.
Any final comments or questions? All right, Dustin, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So that brings us to the close, I know Cindy, next month, we're going to dive in a little bit to some of the council contracts that have been kind of redefined this year, so we'll have that to look forward to. Then the rest of the budgeting process is, is getting the revenue information and, and trying to balance this budget, and that's, that's really what it's about, and my guess is there will be cuts necessary, there always is, but I think our department heads understand that we just can't spend what we don't have, so.
Do you have an anticipated timeline, we'll see the salary ordinance proposal?
That usually, that has to be ratified, Kelly, you remember it's at the end of, I think it's the end of October that has to be ratified, and then the elected officials doesn't have to be ratified till the end of the year, so I would imagine we'll be seeing that in September as well, early September.
I was thinking we should, yeah.
Yep.
Related to your task force training, the resolution to allow us to do this will likely be presented at our next meeting, to my knowledge, the state has given a servants' own status again, so there's a dear problem within our jurisdiction, so we should see that at the next council meeting, which will be Tuesday, Mayor, after Labor Day, I think, Tuesday night.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay.
Let me pull that up, that's, because it, it won't be on, it'll be the fifth.
Okay.
Yep, Tuesday the fifth, seven o'clock. Back to normal.
And you're ready with that.
Appreciate your consideration of, hi, Paul, I'm glad to get that done, and now the word begins on that. Gentlemen, thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, all right, any, anything else coming for the council? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All right.
Safe travels.
Still light out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know you're going to be gone next week, but I'll get with you the first, the week after.
Yeah, Monday looks pretty good, I'm going to be back Thursday, Friday I'm solid.
Yeah, okay, well, I'll check for you.
That'd be great, thanks Cindy.